I'll call it December 19 Franklin Township Board of Supervisors meeting in order. At 7:04, in attendance are Supervisor Snyder, David Morris Torres. Also in attendance are Solicitor Mark Thompson, Park Historical Chairman Paul Lagassi, Township Manager Joan McCall, Secretary Sharon Norris, and there are approximately 10 members of the public. We have a speaker tonight, Ambassador Mandec. Can we stand for questions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment or anything on tonight's agenda? Last public comment is for items not on tonight's agenda. It's important that you state your name clearly for the tape so your comments can be reflected accurately. Do you state whether you're a township resident or a township taxpayer? So we're open for public comments on agenda. Nancy, why don't you start the first motion?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the November 14, 2018 meeting minutes as presented by township's secretary. Discussion?
I'm attending, I'm attending, yeah.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carries five to zero. So I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt Resolution 2018-23 regarding disposition of records for the Board of Supervisor meeting of November 14, 2018.
I'll second that.
Thank you, David. Any discussion? This is pretty routine, just feel okay to raise the tape. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, good, five to zero. Thank you.
Okay. Just a comment on the agenda, we have quite a number of items on the agenda tonight, but they're pretty short and routine, but we'll try to get through them quickly. I make a motion that the Board approve the November Treasurers Report, which includes the following dispersments: The General Fund with dispersments and transfers of $110,329.24. Park and Recreation Fund with dispersment of $12,290.79. Open Space Fund with dispersment of $6,768.42. Highway 8 Fund with dispersment of $78,712.17. And the Fire Hydrant Fund with dispersment of $580.80. Leaving a balance in all funds totaling $918,472.28. Seconded by Stephanie. Any comments, upgrades, or corrections on the Treasurers Report?
So John, the Open Space Fund, when do we start paying for Stolffus?
Next year.
Next year. This is just for the current.
The only thing I saw as a comment is page 30 or 36 in the report budget where it has October of 2018 as opposed to November. Everything else is November, so I don't know if that's just a...
Just a typo.
So I think it was last month. That's it.
But the numbers...
On page 30?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
That went into Excel or not?
Well, yeah, something happened that I lost it and I thought I recovered everything and that's why I missed out on it, but the numbers on the front are correct.
So it is from November?
It's now October. But the numbers that are transferred to the front in some ways are correct. I will change that to say that for the numbers.
I'll second.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We did vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero.
Next is the November Zoning Officers' Report. There's no motion required for this. Permits issued was five, building inspections 23, building fees collected $1,498.64. Nothing collected on recreation, open space, or impact fees. But the miscellaneous fees totaled $860. There were six zoning issues reported. Joan, do you have any updates on those?
The 2007 Highland Drive, that's Salford class, we're here about, thanks to the owner is working with Jeff to bring in compliance. 1651 New London Road, the applicant has to apply to the zoning hearing board and we haven't heard anything from him, so Jeff is going to send him a letter. And the same on 3327 Appleton Road. We're scheduled to have a hearing at District Court this Tuesday and since the other party dissecured a new attorney, they asked for continuance, which is a court granted, but we don't have a further date on that. 23 Highland Drive, the stormwater issue has been resolved and we're just waiting for a letter from Hill Press Associates confirming that it was completed as planned. 1620 New London Road, they are applying for a use of occupancy permit and they have the application, but we haven't received it yet, so Jeff O'Hulmes is going to send them a letter.
We're expecting it?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes. And then 206 Fox Farm, that's the house that has deteriorated and it's hopefully going to be sold for soon so someone can do something with it.
Joan, in the writing, this is request to demolish the structure was made to the property maintenance, is that the whole house or just the garage?
No, the whole house is, it's just a mess. The roof is falling, it's caving in on itself.
It's just that, they'll sell the property and it's all crap.
The bank is obviously in control.
Yes.
But they've been notified to maintain the grass and I would... Anything else?
No.
Stephanie, why don't you do the next three?
Sure.
Cameron, go to show up and do the FSA report.
Yeah, I have it here. So, one quick thing on the...
Oh, we have it.
Oh, somebody's here.
Park Bob's here to do it. Okay.
Before we go to, I don't know where this may fall into, I guess Dave's report would be the closest regarding the ACOM memo from December 13th. With regards to the telephone issue, Part 4, currently a temporary phone line has been installed, Keystone has indicated a permanent telephone line will be installed by December 14th. I just wanted to make sure that that was done, if you're aware.
I am not, I can check on that though.
Yeah, I just sometimes feel like we need to keep our tabs on whatever.
This is a telephone line for Lexington Point Sewer.
Exactly.
Just the automatic dialer with the tank should always fly.
Okay, that's not been working right.
No, so they were supposed to install a new line, so I will check with that. Sandy to see if it has, she's usually on top of us then, so if, well, I will definitely check with her.
No, and then, you know, in their letter, they just got the wrong year, January 1st, 2019, and the first part, but that's, we all know what they need. So, sorry about it.
Yeah, but I think the key message is that it continues to drag.
Right.
I guess so be it, right? You can't make them do what they don't want to do.
We had problems before there with the phone line not working enough.
No, I don't mean the phone line, the whole idea of actually doing the plans and working with Sandy to get them the plans on time is just, you continue to drag, it just lets go by and things aren't...
Okay, I'm sorry. I have the next three. Plan Commission did not meet. Paul Lagassi will present a summary of the December 5th Hart meeting, Circle Commission did not meet in December.
All right, so on December 5th, as you know, the Hart met at 7:00 PM. The primary item on the agenda was COA application for 3313 Appleton Road for storm doors. And that is further down on the agenda tonight as, you know, Hart recommended approval for that. We also talked a little bit about trying to streamline some of Hart procedures for certain exterior work or dealing with relatively minor issues of all the like, or some of the standard stuff that we find ourselves faced with, such as asphalt roof shingles that are being replaced by asphalt roofs, so that we could perhaps develop procedures that would still require a COA, but wouldn't require a full meeting, so we could streamline things a little bit. And I'm in the process of talking to current CERIS to see if there's any procedures that have been adopted elsewhere that could act as guidelines for something that we could develop here. This was also prompted in part by the storm doors, so we're not going to have to fully convene Hart to do storm doors, but we don't really have an alibi ordinance for that sort of thing because of what it's worth. We also, as always, reviewed training opportunities and we also briefly reviewed the state of discussion concerning the 896 traffic study, which is going to be a topic here tonight. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Paul. Jim Germain is not here, but Bob, who's last name, I don't know, will present the FSA report.
Okay. So, as you know, with 35 members, this year we had seven openings, five positions were filled with township residents, two were from New London. The first season is over, that ended on the 24th, and we'll reopen Pottery and Shotgun on the 26th to the 26th of January, the day of the Christmas. During the shotgun season, I guess it was Jim Germain spoke with a local resident, it was hunting in the bottom of the Cross and Park Woods. After a conversation about not hunting in the park, the resident left, returning to his truck in the lower parking lot and left the scene. So that is basically the only poacher, maybe one called Matt, that was spotted this year. I did Cross and Vanashire, apparently none in here this year. That's the first time in a long time, so we've been pretty much on that. All the boundaries and setbacks remarked for every preserve that the township owns. This year's harvest report, we got five bucks in four doe in Franklin, one buck, three doe in a white clay crescent, two doe in Vanashire, for a total of 15. Our service projects, I had sent an email out, I guess back in November, that it would be our last project for the year, and that was a Chesterville Creek Road cleanup. We did that on the 17th, eight man-hours in that one. We towed 124 hours of service projects in so far from July to December, and I lied in that the last project is coming up now, and it'll be Christmas Eve, something we generally don't tell people, but I feel we need to tell people this year. Club gives me $400 a year to go out and find my family, so we get out with family every year, it's never the same one. And we shop and we make some weeks Christmas Eve, Christmas morning very special. So that will end our year till we hit the 219 on Christmas Eve, probably about 5:00. That'll talk people up here.
That and a side of the youngest?
No, no that's...
Bob, thank you for your point. For everybody's interest, the FSA is sanctioned to hunt certain properties in Franklin Township, and the group provides service projects to the township during repairs. They did a really nice job of fixing the park, the land's up after some graffiti and some other damage down there. They saved the township somewhere between $5,000 and $7,000 a year contract across. And they're great conservationists and environmentally insensitive folks, so they become stewards that'll hand for us, we appreciate their service. Thank you, Robert.
And that's a little shopping.
Nancy, why don't you start the next one?
I make a motion that based on the recommendation of the Hart, the Board grant a certificate of appropriateness for storm doors at 3313 Appleton Road. The project is in compliance with the applicable Secretary of the Interior standards, and the proposed work is in keeping with the current appearance of the structure and appropriate to the structure, and will preserve the historical character of the structure. Seconded by?
Seconded.
Discussion?
Why don't you, since you...
Well, I mean, brief summary of this...
We said this is a brief summary.
That Liz Randy is front and center tonight, currently has two storm doors on three of her interior doors, and what she's going to do is essentially unify the work of the storm doors and then see to it that it will be three storm doors, so that she can have that on her charity staff. So it's a very straightforward.
Okay, and the Hart approved it and reviewed it.
The Hart has recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve it.
I don't have any questions.
Anybody else, any discussion? We'll vote then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Thank you for taking care of it.
Thank you for taking care of it. Have the science helped out with the traffic?
Sometimes. She goes to text and mail and she...
Yeah, I risked my life.
Just don't turn your back to the traffic.
Well, hopefully the future discussions, they'll... Okay, so I make a motion that based on the recommendation of township engineer, it is a December 11, 2018 letter, the Board authorized escrow release number two for the Apple Grove Charter School in the amount of $435,084.7, leaving a balance in the letter of credit of $107,833.71.
I'll second that.
Thank you, David. Any discussion? Seemed pretty straightforward. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, motion carries five to zero.
I'd make a motion that the Board adopt Resolution 2018-24 providing methods and agencies chosen to fulfill public safety needs for the township. Seconded by Stephanie.
You have the most of all that?
So John, I thought it was changed, right? This is the way it's bid?
Why don't you read them off, you already got it.
Okay, so, it's a whole... So, the West Grove Fire Company and the Avondale Fire Company will provide fire production. The West Grove Fire Company and the Avondale Fire Company will designate responses in the firm recovery area. And then the second one is West Grove Fire Company and the Avondale Fire Company will each provide BLS service.
Basic life support.
Basic life support. The Avondale State Police will provide full-time police protection. The West Grove Fire Company and the Avondale Fire Company will provide rescue service. The Southern Chester County Emergency Medical Service, Medic 94, will provide advanced life support services. And then Howard Walls is designated as the emergency management coordinator. And further, that the Board of Supervisors has reviewed and revised if necessary to adopt the Franklin Township Emergency Operation Plans, and has reviewed and adopted the National Institute of Management System as a common operating practice. So it looks like it's what they've been doing, right?
Yeah, that's pretty much what we've been doing. West Grove and Avondale provide fire ambulance services, and Medic 94 provides highly specialized ambulance service. They provide advanced life support. If they come to an event and require immediate medical attention, they get in business and not just transport, so they're very skilled technicians coming in there. They're the main ones.
And we're very happy with Harold, so there's no...
Harold Walls has been our emergency coordinator for a long time, and we appreciate his service, so I have no issue with what we have here. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Assuming you all had a chance to look at the budget that had been amended after our discussions in the past.
I don't know if we amended it, it's pretty good. It was advertised.
Just advertised, nothing...
We beat that up in October and November.
That's what I was saying, since then.
Right, right.
Since then. So we have it in front of us, it's in our package, so. I make a motion that the Board adopt Resolution 2018-25, adopting the 2019 final budget.
Seconded.
Seconded by Nancy.
Any discussions?
We're pretty satisfied with it. The only thing I would suggest that we get it posted on our website in PDF form and a unrestricted Excel form, so that people can look at it and they need to do their own arithmetic, they can do it.
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty close to what we planned in the past, so nothing major. So, any other discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, Mr. Chairman.
I make a motion that the Board adopt Resolution 2018-26, a tax level resolution setting the tax rates for 2019. Tax rates remain the same... Setting the tax rates for 2019, tax rates remain, I thought...
That's wrong.
Yeah, that's why I...
Well, the overall's the same for the...
Right.
Yeah. Let me try this again. I make a motion that the Board adopt Resolution 2018-26, a tax level resolution setting the tax rates for 2019. The overall tax rate remains the same as 2018. Period.
Okay, as amended by Stephanie, I'll second that.
Okay, David, second. Discussion, real quick, for people who aren't aware, help me Joan if my memory's not as good as it used to be. It's Joan. What we did, because in the very beginning of next year, the loan for the park, Cross and Park, will be paid off, and we had allocated .85...
.27 is what the park mileage was.
The park mileage was .27, yeah, that's right. .27, and it was lowered for 2019 to .20, since we don't have that outstanding debt anymore, and the difference of .07 was allocated towards the general fund.
Yes. And just the other comment, and we're going to use money that would normally go into the park for Stolffus, right? So...
Yes, because of the...
Because of the open space, certainly.
Basically, we paid off a $750,000 loan, so that loan service is about $56,000 a year, approximately the cost of the loss in that. So, we did two things. One, we're going to fund the Stolffus farm land preservation arrangement, and the rest of the money we're going to use to make some major improvements in the park. Need to grenade the bathrooms and do some other fundamental stuff down there, so we'll use that money wisely.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries five to zero.
Make a motion that the Board adopt Resolution 2018-27, setting the tax rate of $36 per parcel that is located within 780 feet of a public fire hydrant. The rate remains the same as 2018.
Just for general information, any house that's within 780 feet of a fire hydrant gets an additional tax for that because their water is provided by Chester Water, and we will see that in our monthly costs for $580 a year or something, $580 a month. So that's where that money comes from, it's a tax. And it's a huge benefit to the property owners because they get a significant reduction in insurance because the fire hydrant's that close, so it's a bargain for them all the way. So we just have to restate that because it's a tax.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, so another important motion, I make a motion that the Board authorize the staff to advertise the January 2019 meeting schedule. Seconded. Next, Nancy. It just gives us the way to start things off in 2019, right? So it just looks like this meeting. Do you want me to read it, John, or is it...
It's up to you, you can read it.
I think we're fine.
All right, you're okay with it? I read it, I'm satisfied with it.
It's just pretty standard meetings.
And we can always adjust, we have adjusted in the past when changes are required.
Maybe just for the audience, we'll have our organizational meeting on January 7th, so just so folks know that, and then we'll have a normal meeting, a Board of Supervisors meeting on January 16th.
So there are two meetings in January.
See? We did that just for you. All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the next item on the list is something Paul Lagassi's been talking to the Board about for quite a while, with some potential improvements toward the village. And looking back in history, there's a number of studies that have been conducted, it was run back in 2006, conducted by Michael Taylor, it's a fairly large report, 67 pages here, called 896 Traffic Carter Plan. So it's recommending a bunch of traffic improvements. And then we have another report that was produced in September 2009 called Taming Traffic, and it also addresses issues on 896 going through Kimblesville, and I think Natasha were involved in that study. Also an extensive, let me see, 100 pages, it's got to be 78 pages, so it's not a minor And Paul's been talking about this for a while, and he asked that we discuss this for consultants, including Natasha Mandec down here. Natasha's a PE, both a PE and also some very impressive planning credentials, so. The only thing that I would do to get it started here is a couple items, just I want to make sure we get at least into the discussion. And the village has some significant limitations, so I want the discussion to address those if possible. The village is divided into three segments by Route 896 and Appleton, where both major traffic therapists with high-speed, high-volume traffic. And that limits the pedestrian movement between segments, so some traffic control will be required if we've got cross. The other issue is the village does not appear to have any real estate for future commercial development. And that's a major element in any walk-in village, it provides an attraction to visitors, AKA destination place. If you look at intercourse and Strassburg P.A., they have all kinds of shops and things that attract them, I don't see a student, but certainly we can address that. Then there'd be visitor parking, I'll give you a copy of this here. These are just some quick notes I threw down. Sidewalk real estate, easements and property purchases. And then Pendott is planning a major upgrade in the three-way intersection, Route 896 and Appleton, and it's expected that the intersection will have a three-way stop with all traffic required to stop. This upgrade was supposed to occur in 2017, but Representative Lawrence recently advised that it can be delayed to 2020. But I haven't had any contact with Pendott about the project for some time, so whatever village upgrades are considered, they need to be fully integrated with whatever their project is, so you just pass that. That's all, I just wanted to get that started, so. You don't have to address all those items tonight, but just want to at least throw it out there so it comes up in the discussion.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come here this evening. As many of you know, I'm not a stranger. Prior to working at the Command Associates, I worked for the Chester County Planning Commission, and that was during the time when I participated in the taming traffic study, which was done in 2008, 2009 timeframe, and I remember coming to meetings here and seeing some familiar faces. So, you know, I'm happy to be back in Franklin and, you know, continuing the conversation about Kimblesville, about 896, and about what might be able to be done. I'll preface some comments about, I'm really here tonight to help... I'll preface some comments about, I'm really here tonight to help answer questions, provide insights, and provide guidance. I don't have answers on exactly what should be done, but more to tell you about the process that the township could go through and some potential opportunities that you might want to consider if you do want to focus on Kimblesville and kind of move forward with making it a more walkable village, or other enhancements.
Natasha, you did Walk the Village recently with Paul and I.
I did.
Just to make sure everybody knew that you've been recent.
Yes, I have been here recently. And I'm currently working on the comp plan, on the transportation element for London Britain Township. So I've been in these neck of the woods and talking about 896 again. As part of my coordination for London Britain's comp plan, I did reach out to Pendott about the 896 project. And so I fortunately had the plans that they shared with the public, I think in 2016, does that sound right? And so one of the things I did before meeting with Paul was, you know, Paul and Karen Marshall from the county reached out and said, "Hey, do you remember that Kimblesville?" I said, "Yeah, I remember that." So I dusted it off and looked at it. And then I looked at Pendott's plans for 896 to figure out how, what has changed maybe since this was done. And so I think there have been some significant changes since this report was done. First, in terms of land use and development within Kimblesville. At the time, there was, you know, a potential planned development, some significant residential development plan for the village area. And that was part and factor into this planning effort. So obviously, that development hasn't come to fruition as previously thought. Pendott has very slowly advanced plans for 896. They, I was somewhat surprised to see that they did incorporate two medians. Gateway median treatments that were recommended in this report to help slow traffic. I think that's the number one goal. And one of Pendott's goals overall is to improve safety. So number one is how do we slow traffic and how do we improve safety? And you need to do that before you even start to think or talk about making it more pedestrian-friendly or walkable place. So Pendott has incorporated those medians, which are traffic calming devices, which should help to slow traffic. It should send a signal to the drivers that this is a different place, this isn't the rest of 896, and, you know, please slow down. I think they also have some rumble strips, transverse rumble strips, again, to send a, you know, signal to the driver to slow down and drive at an appropriate speed. So development hasn't happened, Pendott has moved forward with their plans. They've incorporated some of the recommendations, not all of the recommendations. Obviously, the pedestrian paths that were identified here are not in Pendott's plan at this point. The other thing that's happened since 2009 is there are some new grant resources available, particularly for the construction of transportation improvements. I don't know how many of you are familiar with transportation funding at the state level, but in 2013, the legislature passed Act 89, which essentially provided new and dedicated source for transportation. As part of that legislation, there are two grant programs. Both of them are called the Multimodal Transportation Fund. One is administered by Pendott, one is administered by the Commonwealth Financing Authority. And they are both annual programs. So before that time, if you had a project like this, there weren't a whole lot of options or ways to move it forward, particularly if you have limited resources available to do that. So the somewhat good news is that there are some resources that are now available. But I think, you know, going back to my meeting with Paul, we walked Kimblesville and we brainstormed, and it was fun. And I think there's a lot of options. You know, could you do a traditional concrete sidewalk and curb with some type of grass buffer area? Or maybe choose a different material, not concrete. Use some type of brick or other paver that might be more fitting for historic context. Could you forget the curb and just do a very simple pedestrian path? That could maybe be asphalt, that could maybe be crushed stone, or some other type of material. Could it be on one or both sides? And if it is only on one side, or even if it's on both sides, how do you safely cross 896? And where do you do that? And how does that work with the Appleton Road intersection, which is a challenge? So those were a lot of the ideas that we talked about. And not unlike work that I have done previously and work that I've done with other communities, usually when there's a lot of questions like that, one thing that you can do is do some type of planning process, feasibility evaluation, to help gather input from the community and the stakeholders and the property owners. And help to figure out and answer questions about what is feasible? And what would work? And what would best reflect the needs and the goals of the community? So, you know, it could be easy for me to stand out on the corner and say, "Well, you should do this and you should do that." But I don't live here, those aren't my, you know, my properties. And so we, you know, really encourage, and we, as, you know, Nick Mann, as the transportation players, and other consultant firms, really try to have a public involvement process. So it's not just a technical feasibility, but it's also kind of community input. So what can you get out of doing some type of planning process? You can help to answer questions such as, what does the community want or envision? What is feasible? How much is it going to cost? Can it be phased? How can it be implemented? Could it be implemented through the land development process? Could it be implemented through a grant of some sort? Could it, or elements of it, be implemented as part of Pendott's 896 project? You know, all of those are questions that you could try to answer and address through some type of planning process. And at the end of the day, depending upon the scope of work and the, you know, the funds that are available for planning, you can have kind of a blueprint of saying, this is what our vision is for Kimblesville in terms of transportation and bicycle or pedestrian improvements. And then, and you have kind of an implementation plan that goes with that blueprint and says, this is how it can be implemented, possibly in a phased approach over time. And maybe you get Pendott to implement some crosswalks when they do the Appleton Road intersection. And maybe there's a land development or something that comes through and an opportunity to provide a sidewalk connection in one piece. And then you come back and say, well, we're going to get a grant together and finish the project. So that, those are some of the outcomes of a planning process. I think there's a couple, when it comes to planning, there's a couple of ways that you could go about it. You could just do a standalone plan, kind of similar to this taming traffic, but, you know, a little bit different probably in terms of, this really just provided lines on a map. You need something more detailed to address the feasibility issues. That can you really fit a sidewalk or a path, and what type and what width? You need that level of detail and those answers, I think, to move forward. So you could do a standalone plan. We've had and worked with a number of municipalities that are doing comp plan updates. And as part of their comp plan, they have a priority focus area. One example is East Ocean, updated their comp plan. And as part of that, they focused on their town center, which is Oceanville. And so they kind of did a little bit of planning and laid the groundwork in their comp plan. And then they followed up and did a trail feasibility study and corridor plan more specifically. So you could have it be a focus area or, you know, part of your comp plan. Similarly, you could focus on it as part of a broader open space trail greenway plan for the township. Again, you could have kind of a more detailed focus on Kimblesville as part of that overall scope. You could think about partnering with your neighboring municipalities on focusing on 896 and seeing if they have similar issues or concerns, or that you could work, you know, similar maybe to the McCorr-McTaylor study, but going back to, you know, working coordinated on, specifically on 896. So those are all ways that you could advance the planning for Kimblesville. In terms of resources to do planning work, I'll first start by saying there's no free money. There's grants that are available, but they all require some type of match. And just as important as match is the township support. You know, the money is important, but it's also that the township takes ownership of the plan and wants to help facilitate the planning process. That's when it's, I think, most successful. The grant resources also sometimes have strings attached, and so you have to be willing to accept those strings if you accept the money. The number one source of funding in Chester County is the Vision Partnership Program, which I'm sure you're probably familiar with. That's the Chester County Planning Commission, they do a grant round twice a year. And so I would guess they would probably have around an early 2019, and then one kind of midway through 2019. The second potential source is the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, which did this taming traffic. They did this kind of in-house as part of their work program, but they also have a grant program. It's called Transportation Community Development Initiative. That required a 20% match, but it has been used by municipalities to do work similar to what we were talking about. We are just about to get started on a streetscape plan for Tough Kennaman in New Garden Township. So, you know, Tough Kennaman and Kimblesville aren't the same, but I would say characterized, and no villages. You mentioned intercourse, no two villages are the same, which is what kind of makes them great.
I was just looking for ones that had, you know, the kind of attractions that a walkable village would have. So I knew that's out of step, I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, I mean, I think one place to think about, and again, one of the reasons I think Karen Marshall called me, is Marshallton. If any of you have been up to Marshallton in West Bradford recently, they had a streetscape project. And now, if you drive through Marshallton, there's four dogs. Maybe there's one or two other...
Quiet industries.
Yeah, you know, there's not a kind of real heavy commercial presence there. But they had a significant concern about speeding. And so they did a street traffic calming and streetscape plan, and then they got a grant to do the implementation. It included gateway medians, which are part of Pendott's plan. And then it included brick sidewalks and some crosswalks. Again, that were appropriate for that type of village and that type of village setting. So I would say that's maybe a, one that's probably closer in context to what you have in Kimblesville.
What are gateway medians? Is that what they have in Centerville, Delaware, or some...
Yes.
And were you involved with Marshallton, your firm?
Our firm was, I was at the county at the time.
Like how ballpark, I mean, how much all in did it cost, roughly?
I can get that number for you.
I mean, if you had to have an educated guess right now?
I want to say the construction alone, not counting the planning and design, but the construction alone was a million, maybe a million and a half, if I had to guess.
And then the community paid a portion of that.
Yeah, they got a grant for the construction. And I can't remember, a lot of the grants, they 20% match. That's, that's not always the case, but 20 to 30% match is what a lot of grants kind of require.
So for something like that, that would call, we would have 250 to 400 or so, give or take?
Yeah, and it, I think it really depends on the scope and scale, you know, how far you go out. And, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into it. That project, the other difference in terms of construction cost is if you use federal funds, there are federal strings and federal requirements attached. So as you can imagine, there's a higher, often a higher cost, particularly in the design, to get through those federal requirements. I think that's part of the reason that Pendott's 896 project has been slow. My understanding is part of it is the historic district in Kimblesville, and trying to make sure that the proposed improvements don't negatively impact the, you know, the historic context and the historic district, and that's a federal requirement. So they have things that have to be done following those federal requirements.
When you walked around with...
Paul.
With Paul. When you walked around with Paul, did you have any feeling with regards to challenges, things that are either challenges for our village or opportunities that you might think about?
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I've talked about it too, but I think when we were standing, I mean, I think first and foremost, I don't know what Pendott has truly proposed for Appleton.
We don't either.
So to me, that's my number one recommendation to you is to reengage Pendott and find out what's going on with their project, what's the status, and what's really the plan for the Appleton Road intersection. Because I think that helps, I mean, that's the heart of the village, and it can help to kind of set the stage for what else can, you know, transpire. This plan called for...
Yeah, it sort of, well, it outlines essentially some kind of walkway on both sides of the road throughout both the length of 896 in the village as well as going down Appleton. And some of those things simply aren't feasible. They're simply not feasible.
So that's what, I think Paul and I looked at the south side of 896 here, and the graves, the utility poles, the front doors. It just doesn't look like there's room to fit.
The front door.
The front door, is that what you're... To me, with, again, we didn't measure anything, this was just me looking, Paul and I, that it would be really tight and difficult to fit a sidewalk or path along 896 on the south side. Now, we did look at the north side and said, maybe you could fit something on the north side. And if you could, and get people kind of here, depending upon the treatment for Appleton Road, maybe you can have a safe crossing to kind of the south side, and then be able to come on the west, north on the west side to link up to the school.
Well, if Pendott does a three-way stop, which we think that's really the only reasonable solution to improve traffic safety, it's undesirable from a traffic standpoint.
Not all of it.
Right.
But I'm not sure there's another solution. There isn't enough room, a rounded out would really be nice, but it's just, they're just not enough room for it.
Well, I thought what they put in here was...
Pardon?
This realignment, yeah, and that's, it does impact the grass median, but...
Pick your habit.
The one traffic issue that's a real issue is northbound traffic, especially trucks coming north. When you come up there, the intersection is fairly blind to them, and they can't make the turn and stay in their lane. So they always end up crossing over the other lane and sitting around it.
In the bottom line, it's a fair...
It's surprising we don't have as more conflicts than we do. We've had conflicts. We have signs up on that little triangle there, and they, we replace them pretty regularly up there. So it's just a tight intersection, so if you don't stop the traffic, I'm not sure it'll be really improved or much, but that's my own opinion, not a traffic engineer's.
If I may just jump in, I'm not going to say this is going to happen, but with respect to that, at least one of PennDOT's iteration of their plans for this area calls for, I believe, mediums to be placed right up here, and having something there that forces them to slow down would mitigate some of that. You know, again, a lot of this is, you know, it's going to depend, and the other, the other medium is here, and although the, nobody can see it but me, there's in fact already a yellow striped medium there, so they're just basically talking about putting something with more physical presence than lines on the road. Over here, on the other hand, you would actually have to widen things out a little and put, you know, again, something with more physical presence, but having that kind of physical presence there, I think, helps. The other thing is, and I don't know how, you know, these are things that would be thought about, say, in developing a plan and looking at options, because really, at this point, everything is to some degree theoretical. If there was an interest in putting some kind of curbing in the village, curbing is a much better visual confinement than having just white lines on the side of the road. I mean, we, the township's made a point of putting white lines on the sides of the roads and didn't have them, you know, to the edge to get people to see their space better. But when you do, you know, some curbing, that actually, I mean, how it all works out. I'm just, I'm just talking generalities. None of this is in, is written down in the sun, but it gets people to slow down. So if you're looking to slow traffic, that's one option.
Let some 25 mile an hour speeds, speed on the signs. Let them know before they get to the curb, by the way, I live right on the curb.
Right.
Okay, so you know?
Yeah.
All right. So you're talking about sidewalks and all this. We've been around and around, about the shade. Now, now we're going into another realm here. You're not going to stop any of this. There's too many people out here now, okay? We've been around here for 45 years. I've seen, I've seen it grow. I've seen it flourish. You're not going to stop any of this traffic, okay? Also, on Appleton Road, when they make this right turn going south on 896, no one stops at this stop sign. If I was a state cop, I'd park myself right here where the, where the telephone place is. I could get my quota.
One day.
Boom. In a day.
So if it's, if, if, for example, it's a, well, first off, I think any handling of that intersection that I've seen calls for Appleton to be repositioned in such a way that it tees into 896. Once it tees into 896, you don't have this semi-yield situation, which is what you've got right now. So it's much harder to just blow through an intersection when you've got to make a 90-degree turn. So some of this, some of these things may go away, but for the moment, I, I would just like to get back to the, what we're talking about here, which is slowing the traffic down and improving walkability. I don't think that we should assume that the conditions we're experiencing now are necessarily going to be the conditions we would experience if certain kinds of...
Well, let's go back to Flynn Hill Road in Good Hope, okay? Intersection there.
Right.
I don't know how many accidents a year, okay? They finally, before you get to Flynn Hill, there's flashy lights, there's all kinds of stuff to let you know. There's nothing here. There's nothing here to let you know what's going on. People have come out this road.
From Delaware.
Yeah, from Delaware.
I understand what you're saying, but, but, you know, you're talking about all this money and all the curves and sidewalks and all this other stuff. Let's get some visual stuff out there. Well, I mean, PennDOT's somebody that's called for that stuff. I mean, PennDOT's, I'd love to see it. I'd really love to see it.
So that does sound like the right next step is to start working with PennDOT and, so that we can help first...
So we're not like, we're for all these years. We're talking about years now.
I think you need to, the work they do there is going to control everything we do here, so. We need to find out where they are in their schedule. They delayed it from 17 to 20. It's federal money. They did, always told us it's federal money, and that's what they did and do, but we need to get that, so probably representative ones will be the right...
Well, they are holding, they told us that they're having like a final meeting, planning meeting now, and then as soon as they finalize that, then they're going to come back to the townships, so.
Okay, so we're not involved in the planning meeting, we can only...
Not the initial.
Okay. So you're connected with them and you'll know when that...
They'll let us know, and then they'll come, when they finalize that, then they'll come back to the township.
Okay. You know, it's a kind of idea.
That'll be Laura.
Right, and once I get a...
I'd like to ask you a question.
You missed it.
How many people here live in the village? And so, how many of us really want to be walkable in the village? I think that's the first thing. One slide there.
Well, I don't know, unless you say your prayers to be told, they'll tell you.
Remember the concerns...
We're talking about cross, we're talking about down Appleton and all of that.
Show me what you want to do. What are you going to do? You going to take, you going to take some of my property and put a sidewalk along there? Well, I'm just asking, because I mean, I sell too.
Well, I can see, you know, one of...
People are walking down in the village.
Yeah.
I haven't seen them do walls.
What if we want, oh, I, I see them walk by all the time. I, I only walk on one little piece that I know about, but I see people walking. I know. They walk down to the gas, I think, because I wonder where they're going, right? They do walk, so whether or not we walk on, they're not like, they're walking. I have a more practical question. The blinking light, I love the, who said about Good Hope Road, that blinking light thing, do you have to get PennDOT involved to put those blinking lights on existing sides?
I know, it makes about a hundred accidents a year where they...
Yeah, how do you want to die to get the blinking light or...
Yeah, you're too far in the back of the truck. We have too many people talking at the same time. We're not going to get it in a minute, so we've got to be a little more organized in our talking.
And identify yourself.
I'm going to keep it open.
Yeah, I'm happy going, hello. Just so I know how the blinking lights...
The blinking lights, that's all PennDOT's stuff. It's on their road, you can't put, you could, they let us put like advisory signs like slow down or something like that, but any serious traffic control, they control all that.
Cur ahead, all that stuff, does PennDOT?
For the most part, they let us put, like, we put the buggy signs up for Yamish and stuff like that. Pretty innocuous stuff, but if they make serious, they do it all.
Yeah, we weigh up like a board. I mean, if I may, when I moved here thirty years ago, I could walk reasonably safely from my house on Walker Road up to the mini mart and pick up a newspaper and walk home, right? And now, it's really not safe to do that on the side of the road anymore. If you, and, and so, I would like to be able to walk in the village again. I would like to be able, we go over to 1723 on occasion, and it would be nice if there were some means that I could walk up there rather than having to drive from Walker Road. Right now, I wouldn't do it. And in fact, when the Codies were thinking of putting the winery for a brief time in the garden, on the old Ford Farm, Wilkinson Farm now, I was kind of pleased with that because I could walk to that and go out and come. But there are, you know, there are paths out here that people use, like the path around Wilkinson Farm, the Woodson and Ford Farm, and there are other paths, and, and a walkable village, I think, is going to be useful in terms of allowing people to come in the village, go out of the village in a safe manner. We may not be talking about very extensive changes to what's alongside the road. You're talking about sidewalk on one side of 896 going out north, and then sidewalk on one side of 896 heading out south. That's not necessarily a big physical change. All of this is always going to be theoretical if we do not undertake a study to see what can be reasonably done. It's all, it's just always going to be a session where people get together and see, can we do this? Can we have a plan? Is it impossible? Is it crazy? The point of moving beyond the 2009 traffic study, which simply said, oh, you know, if you want it to be walkable, you do this, you do that, you do that, it's, it's a concept, but it's not a plan. It doesn't actually discuss what is feasible. And without undertaking a study that's devoted to feasibility, we, you know, whether it's possible or not, whether there's interest or not, you know, that's just, it's another topic for discussion at another time, and, you know, there's not even really a point of sitting down with PennDOT and saying, you know, when you come to town to do this, please do it in such a way that we can preserve walkability here and there, because ultimately we would like to be able to develop something, perhaps incrementally as funds become available as we can arrange grants. And it's important to realize too that because the village is a historic district, there are probably some sources of funding available to the village that would not be generally available for doing this in just any location. There will also be some limitations, as Joe was pointing out to me the other day, the kind of surface that could be used for a sidewalk is actually limited by the township ordinance because it's the village and historic district. So it's, we couldn't just put it in plain sight. It would have to be either brick or brick log, so...
Go ahead. Here's kind of a path forward, I think. The PennDOT project is a key element to anything we do, so that's the first thing that needs to be identified and defined in a way that we know what's going on. Second bit would be to commission some kind of study. And my engineering experience with the plan, I've been involved in a lot of complex projects, if you commission a study, you need to be very specific about the objectives that you want in that study and the things that you want and the things you may not want, or otherwise you'll come up with something that will not be, Natasha's done a really good job talking that out tonight. So I think at some point, probably the HARB, with the, in conjunction with the board, develop the key elements of a study. What, what do you want out of this thing in very specific terms? I don't know how else to do it. Otherwise, you get talking in generalities and you just don't get anywhere.
No, I understand.
Because at some point, to answer some of the questions, you need to do some real engineering, you need to measure things. For instance, a sidewalk, nobody wants to walk on a sidewalk that's so close to a road with traffic going 50 miles an hour. That's not a, that's not a comfortable thing to do. You want some kind of buffer, so all that needs to be worked out. That's, that's engineering and measurements and things like that, so that may be one element of the study is, where would you put sidewalks and how could you put them in if they're feasible? But there's certainly many others. I mean, this is an enormous and complex task here, as I say. Just reading the last few days, these studies and listening to Natasha talk and hearing comments from the public here, that this is not a minor undertaking, so.
I have a suggestion now. I mean, do we need the state's approval to get more police patrol? Maybe hire an outside company surrounding like Abendale?
Police, I'm not sure.
We actually called the state police, my name's Larry, I live at 1733 New London Road, and I actually called the state police, and they did show a presence, a huge difference. I could actually get my mail without getting one over, and he had people pull it over, so, I mean, PennDOT was just spending millions of dollars, but I think if we just had a police presence, like Newark does, anybody go to Newark? Here flies through the names every night.
Let me just say a few things about a police department. I go to a lot of meetings outside of here with supervisors from other townships, so I've fairly got a fairly big network, and when I talk to somebody who has a police department, I always ask them about the police department, how much it costs them, and typically they'll tell you that it's 45% of their budget to keep...
I'm not saying we hire a police department, I'm not saying we incorporate one, I'm saying subcontract one like Abendale did with Parksburg. They never had their own police with the...
They're still engaging a police presence, and it's very expensive, so.
So...
I think we get state police coverage when we ask for it.
Yeah, but it's very short term, yeah. They got way more important things to do. It'd be better to use these local municipalities.
It's a whole other subject to get into, but I can tell you that however you do it, it's very, it's quite an expensive right there, whether you hire your own or you contract them.
Wouldn't if you, if we put in some of these ideas with regards to the meeting, the gateway medium and the rumble strips and all that, wouldn't that help solve the issue more permanently than...
Well, I don't want any rumble strips in my house.
I don't want them in front of my...
Let's put them in front of yours.
And the mediums just create something that people are going to hit.
Absolutely.
My house is going to hit, so.
This house will be, this house will be going up for sale.
All right, just, just finishing the thought on the police thing, because I want to make sure that everybody understands it. Whether you hire them as a contract or you hire them yourself, the costs are very similar because somebody has to hire that person and provide benefits and all the support that you need, so just going at it by a contract basis doesn't save you really very much money. It's an expensive affair.
Well, my, my opinion, I don't, I'm not going to speak for everyone else, but before we had a ton of open land, I want to make it safe, so before I had thousands of acres of open land space, I'd rather make it safe for what we have right now. That's my opinion.
I agree.
I mean, it makes sense. You're saying it's expensive, but when one of us get run over, how expensive is that?
It is, it's like flipping a coin to get your mail.
It is.
Look, I live on a rural road and I know exactly, and I mean, you step out on that road, you better pay attention.
You don't live on this, you don't live on that curb, okay? So we're going to, we're going to leave it there. That's not, you know, this is where we choose to live, but this is, I'll tell you something, something needs to be done, okay? You're an engineer, let me tell you something, I work with engineers all the time. I'm a crane technician. Something needs to be done. Everything can be fixed.
Well, the issue, the intersection itself has been a focus of attention for a long time, although not...
No, I don't know, 40 years ago, you saw one way dirt bike break through there at about 40 miles an hour. There was nobody here. And we're talking about development, it's just going to keep getting bigger and bigger. You're never going to stop this.
I moved into the township 40 years ago, and it was, it was an event, we saw two cars on my road in the day, my neighbors and I said, oh, we saw two cars today, but it's vastly different now.
Sure.
Township, especially on the major cars.
Because everybody's in a hurry to get where the major guard...
I think the PennDOT study, the PennDOT project would be the most to improve the traffic safety for the area. I don't know what it would be, but I think that will provide the biggest impact on traffic safety. The access to the village and the sidewalks and all that possible stuff will come on in conjunction with it. So what I'm proposing is if we find out what PennDOT's doing, and, and then begin a, an effort to define the basis for a study.
Paying taxes here, how about putting a little something in the mailbox, let us know about this kind of stuff, that there's possible, you know, I mean, I don't know what it's called, PennDOT, or, you know, we, you people, or, you know, how about letting it up?
All right.
You know, I would love that. I shouldn't have to come to you, you know, I'm, I'm paying taxes here.
We have a website that has...
I don't go on the computer, I have no time for that. Put something in the mailbox. We got away from that too?
Generally, we have. The, the, the township newsletters have just been, not been effective in transmitting information. Most people just throw them out, they think it's junk mail, unfortunately.
Yeah, you have something, what, you want to say something?
Not going, I also do that during the township. I don't know if it's in act of Congress, but if you were to take Route 896 before the church and Appleton Road, is there any way that you can make that a 25, posting 25 mile an hour? I mean, you know, even, even doing that, because...
We have not been successful in that.
Because that, that's your first step, and if you can get people to drive through here at 25 mile an hour, I'll walk to my neighbor's house.
We do it...
Let me just give you, we have looked at changing the speed limits on a number of roads in the township, and you have to get a traffic, a qualified traffic consultant to come in here and study this, and we have unsuccessful and able to reduce speed limits from 35 to 25 on several exits, even on Old Schoolhouse Road, which has an incredible number of... Even on Old Schoolhouse Road, which has an incredible number of traffic safety issues. And we had a consultant go over here and study it. We thought for sure we could lower it to 25, but we couldn't. So that's not, I think the most effective thing we're going to get is something that Pendott does with the intersection. I don't know what that'll be, a three-way stop or whatever, but that's probably the most, be the most effective.
If you go on 41, you see the work they've done, traffic calming, I guess they've done those mediums. It's pretty good. It's way better than it used to be, nor the Route 1.
But the township really, yeah, the township really can't put anything intrusive in the road without that approval. We wouldn't even consider trying to do something without their concurrence. We're not allowed to do it anyway.
It's their road.
It's their road. So I think the path forward, as I suggested, is we find out a Pendott base of the project and then we begin to develop a clear basis for a study.
And Harv could probably help us with that.
Yeah, well, I think, well, I mean, it's actually, it's sort of hard, it's sort of a busy little condition, but it doesn't.
It's got to be specific. It's got to be a bullet point list. Because any consultant, you give them a wide open schedule, then you're not going to get very much and they're not going to be able to produce quality work. So if you want to go to a planner, you need to tell them bullet point by bullet point, what do you want out of this study?
You can process parameters.
I have a specific suggestion and it will lighten the mood. Can we buy a Jeep Impala or something and make it look like a police car?
I don't have a Jeep. They do work for a while.
So, I see this. We don't want it, you know, like we're cops or something, you know, impostors, okay. But I am, I see this in jest to lighten the mood and in somewhat seriousness. I am a Waze user. I don't expect you to know what that is. I love that you don't know what that is. That's awesome. On Waze, so I think there's some technology that we should also be conservative because they will identify when there's police in the area. And if we have something that looks like a police car, people that are going through and all make, like if we're in the area, we can ping that thing, dawn, dawny, all day long. And, I mean, this is how Waze has took down the towers, right? Low tech, people are always looking for low tech solutions.
She's going back to gray areas.
It's just something, I think there are, we can be creative until Pendott can find us and Pendott figure out how to change times. Like I love this, the beautiful society, I can meet every little one. I do drive like my children with pets live here when I pass, especially when I pass.
Many residents are very careful and good drivers, but unfortunately we have found that the majority of drivers that drive through the township here.
Oh, John, it's very easy to see who drives people on a frequent basis and who commutes. Now, if you don't know their name, that's what I'm trying to tell you, the way they drive.
My idea is a car that looks like a police car and that's, we could wear it on Waze and tell them they're police here.
And put it in the abandoned, running market.
Move it around.
I'll let you hear my driveway. We'll move it around.
Move it around. John Sherman has to move it around.
Careful the advisory kind of signs and that would be more, don't, people figure them out right away. The only thing that really works in traffic control is hard traffic control, stop signs, traffic signals, obstructions in a road, things that force people to slow.
I can move a lot of travel across here.
There are obviously ways, but I think we've got a pretty good discussion here. I think we've got a reasonable path forward. Go ahead, Rick.
John, do you have any statistics for traffic accidents that you have associated with the pavement?
I don't have them, but we certainly can get them. I mean, we have, I mean, we've replaced those signs on that triangle pretty regularly out there. So I don't know whether there are accidents associated with them or they just break the signs.
That's a terrifying thing too. Like if I'm coming, you know, and making that, that right in front of your house trying to do that. I'm scared of that. They can't stop. And I'm like, okay, can I go? And I look for reflections and we're mid windows there, just to see if there's anyone coming. But it's like, you can feel like you're, you know, you take your life in your hands just trying to get to your house.
You got a plan, you got a plan for, before you make a turn, you got a plan ahead of time. You got to think about what you're going to do about a quarter mile down the road.
Yeah, and then someone's right on your butt.
And then you two are the ones that's speeding because, you know, I got to hit my driveway at about 25 miles an hour sometimes because I got people coming right on my butt. You know, so.
Now Natasha, your firm's capable of doing such a study.
Yes, we are.
I'm going to spare you some. Check it out anytime you want.
We have passion around this.
So I think that's where we're going to go, you know, where the rest of the board is.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, this is an amazing township. And I think that historic district really is, can be a tremendous part of it. And you guys have made great progress, but I think, you know, planning strategically is the only way we're going to get changed and the only way it's going to go bad. So I'm all in.
Natasha, out of curiosity, what would a study, feasibility study tend to run?
That was what I was going to mention. It really depends on your scope of work.
Right, how much engineering you do, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, you can, there's a full gamut. The more specific you can be, possibly the more you can get out of it, you know, your money, think of your money being more focused. But the risk of having it be more specific is that if there are issues, controversies, concerns that come up, that you've been so specific that you've kind of blocked out. So using what we've talked about as an example, if you say, you know what, we really know that we can't do anything on the south side, so we don't even want anyone to look at it because it's not feasible or desirable. That helps, right, to say, don't even waste your time out there. But on the flip side, if then someone suddenly says, hey, did you guys think about putting something on the south side? And then the consultant says, well, that's not in our scope of work, you know, that's not always a good solution either. So I think the more specific you can be, it depends on where you are as a community and if you feel like there's consensus and people, you know, are kind of together on what the potential solutions are or if you need to keep it a little bit more wide open to gather more community input and support. You know, we've done concept plans, which are not like this, and I can send examples, but that show, you know, where the curb would be and where the sidewalk over an aerial. We've done them for less than $20,000, maybe 10. But we've done that without a whole lot of public engagement. That, you know. It's expensive. Correct.
I think the specific nature of the scope of work is what will get us something that's economic and will give us the best information.
So, I mean, another example is for East Ocean, we did a paly pipe corridor plan. And now that was fairly expensive. We looked at traffic calming and street skating. We looked at bike type connections throughout. Now that project was probably a $70,000 effort. I did one for Route 30 in East Whiteland and that was over $100,000 and it was a planning effort. But for all of those, we did a conceptual design plan. Now for all of those, we did not do topographic survey. So we would base it on the aerial and field measurements and other things, which gives you more, better information than this, but not as full information as you would get with a topographic survey, so.
Is that idea, is this, not to be weird, but is this a little bit of a waste of money? If we ultimately do not have a decision, if ultimately it's Pendott's decision? And listening to everybody here, it seems like the biggest issue is not having bricks on sidewalks, but to slow down the traffic. So would we want to address the traffic calming first before we get into a big scope of villageifying the area?
I think that's the path. I think that's the path, is that the scope of work that we would develop with a study would complement and follow Pendott's project so that we're fully compatible, so.
Well, I think, I guess, a couple of parting suggestions. On the Pendott project, be proactive as possible.
They listen to us. We've had a number of meetings in here and they do listen.
They do, and they, you know, they want to. So if you know what treatment you want done in Appleton Road or you know what you don't want done, be vocal, be actively engaged and stay on them. I think that's one thing that's happened at the same time, nothing has happened for, when was that McCormick Taylor study done?
2006.
We haven't done anything. We haven't pushed them. Right, and so we need to start pushing. And that's what, and so instead of, if their answer is saying, well, we want to have a planning meeting, you know, I think you have an opportunity if you want to, say, before your planning meeting, we'd like to meet with you and talk about, you know, you know. I don't know, you can, you can decide that maybe depending upon.
We just plan to contact them. I want to engage them through our representative because I think we get better answers that way.
Yeah, or establishing.
We'll review for some answers.
Establishing a relationship with the Pendott project manager. I think that.
We know them well. We know them all by name.
Yeah, yeah.
We have their funds, their emails, everything.
So going back to the question about traffic calming and kind of what comes first, I think there are opportunities for parallel tracks. I think the Pendott has incorporated those gateway treatments and I think those should help. When we talk about traffic calming, it's engineering, education and enforcement. And it's putting all of those things together. And they each play a role in helping people to drive the appropriate speed limit. So Pendott's project, the median treatments, as well as really what they do at Appleton Road, I think is key. But I don't think you have to wait, I mean, a lot of that stuff is already designed. Aside from Appleton Road, I think that's, to me, the big unknown from Pendott's project. That once that gets figured out, then you can work around that. But I think you also want to make sure you don't miss an opportunity, whether it's maybe some minor shoulder widening or maybe you don't want them to do shoulder widening or things that could be part of the Pendott's project that you may or may not want done because of your future plans.
Well, I'm not proposing we just wait until they tell us what we're going to do. I think we can certainly start thinking right now in some terms of what we want out of it and then just merge it with their plan when they reveal it to us. Because nothing is left in this context of work right now.
Well, I don't think it's appropriate to say we plan sidewalks and we don't plan sidewalks. There's no reason to say right now, to make a strong statement when they're, yeah, we need to let the process happen. To me, one great way of slowing traffic down is having to realize, oh my gosh, I'm in a community. Oh my gosh, there's sidewalks. There's things that matter here. Maybe we don't want sidewalks everywhere. I understand. But we kind of have to go through a logical process and not just make statements until we know what we know a little bit more about everything. The other thing I will say London Britain has done is they have an electric speed sign that they use and they move around the township and they put up at different locations. And they, that helps, again, similar to having a state police, it helps for a short amount of time. It doesn't solve the problem.
We have one right now. I don't know how, we collect data on there. What do we get out of that?
We haven't collected any data recently, but the last time we did, it shows that most of the people were obeying.
Oy, because if you go over 20 miles an hour, it says too fast.
And there was a small mouth that did exceed that posted speed limit, but most of them were within that range.
So it could be effective.
That was one of the.
No, no.
That's kind of, we got to ask permission.
Yeah.
We can ask their permission. I mean, I'm back to what Stuckman was saying. The fear here is from the folks here is they, it's not about sidewalks as much as it is about slowing down the traffic.
I think advisory signs just aren't particularly effective in my own experience. I wish it was otherwise, but that's.
Pendott helps with that because they're the experts.
We can't go without them.
No, no, I'm getting them. I'm going to estimate. London Britain has then used their data to coordinate with the state police to get them to try, you know, to work with them on enforcement. So that.
If we call them, their response, they'll come out and watch for a while. Recently they've been ticketing people here going through Kimball's, through the school district over speed. So we've had quite a number of those incidents. So if you're coming through there and it says 15, they're going to be doing 15.
And they'll sit sometimes in the driveway here watching people rolling through the stop sign. They'll catch a bear.
Just one thing about cost, you had mentioned East Goshen Township.
East Goshen.
East Goshen. I know the supervisor's up there very well and just for the residents' point of cost comparison, they've got an $82 million budget. Franklin's got a $2.8 million budget. They're not, we're not in their class at all. So I just want to make sure why they didn't translate that into something. They have, and they have their own police force. They've got a township building with an elevator and green glass and polished brass railings outside. It's completely different than this township right here.
But that doesn't mean we can't beg our township.
No, I didn't say that. I just want to make sure that they have a.
And all of the work that they've done has been grant funded.
So they're smart.
They have been, well, they've been willing to make the commitment of the local match in order to get some of the grant funding, so.
Right.
But I'll be happy to work with Paul and provide some sample scopes that the historic commission could review or whatever I can do to help.
I think the board needs to start working with the historic commission and Harv to develop this general scope of work and bullet points that they might want to have. I think that's the beginning of the effort. Certainly we really appreciate your time this evening. Very insightful and later we've recorded it so I can. You brought up so many points. I started taking notes, but I was losing it. You brought up some really good points and we really appreciate it here. So thank you so much. It's a pleasure to have a real planning person.
And I want to thank the residents for coming and telling us what you think. I know it doesn't sound like we hurt you, but we have hurt you and we'll keep that in mind as we try to develop. I mean, I heard you clear, you want to get that traffic reduced. So, thank you.
I'll go to your work.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Keep your tongue in your mouth. I lost track. Oh, I think.
I'll make the last motion. John, I think it's up to you.
All right, I got the next one. I make a motion that the board authorized the solicitor that advertised the addition of dwelling unit ordinance for an accurate future meeting.
I'll second that.
Seconded by David. We have had lots of discussion on this issue. We've had six or seven meetings with the planning commission developing this thing. We've had several iterations with the board build in with. And I think the ordinance is a significant improvement to what we had. And I'm willing to support it. We did get a letter from the Chester County Planning Commission that strongly supports the ordinance. And that's not surprising that Brian O'Leary, he's the CEO of Chester County Planning Commission, has been here in meetings regularly and talks about this ordinance. I'm not surprised that they're supportive of it. So the ordinance really allows additional living units in the form of add-ons to a house for a mother-in-law or family member or if the land size is big enough, they can build another residence on the property. So that's the basis for it. We have an ordinance that allows it right now. But it has some significant deficiencies and it's been misinterpreted many times. I believe this is an improvement. I know not everybody agrees with me, but I agree that it's a significant improvement to what we had. Next, go ahead.
No, I've spoken before. I just disagree with your basic premise, but it's fine. I just outnumbered clearly.
We have other comments and discussion.
I'm tired of talking about it. So I support the ordinance.
The only question I have, and people from the.
Yeah, it was a definition.
Jeff Foles, after looking at this, again, looked at the definition of an additional dwelling unit and he spoke to both Mark and I, he wanted us to go back to what was, the definition that was already in the ordinance and just the least, the last section of it says for related bounding. and just the leak, the last section of it says for related founding members.
Not to be established as a.
He, he just felt that that was, that said it better. And, and Mark said.
Just be clear, John, when you say that there, it, it is not significantly dinner, different, we now are allowing people to build additional houses on their property for rental. So it's fine, if that's what people want.
I'm not sure you can control rentals.
Of course. Well, if you can't control rentals, I mean, then we'd better come up with a strategy for managing rentals, because we have people living in houses like the house across the street that no one should ever have lived in, that we'd better learn how to manage them. You either do it right, or you don't do it.
There's more of it going on out there than we believe.
That we need to do it right. No one should have lived in that home. Absolutely not. And if something went wrong, we'd be as responsible as anybody.
I don't know, we do.
Not necessarily.
I, I would certainly be responsible.
Currently don't regulate anyone who would rent either a single-family home or a portion of it.
And we're now opening a big Pandora's box.
I, I don't think it's any more of a hazard.
It is not currently allowed, okay?
But people are driving.
But we don't, but that's not legal. If, if they're doing it outside the legal restrictions.
We're not allowing it, we haven't changed that.
You just changed it, just read it, just read it.
It doesn't say rental is allowed.
You just struck out the part that says.
For the lease, for the rental.
All right, I'm ready to just put it on hold.
Not to be established as a rental unit for income purposes.
That's saying the lead, he, that's.
Right, that means it's now allowed to rent.
So, so I just, I have a comment. So I, I don't like, I personally don't like changes at the last minute. So the planning commission spent a lot of time on this ordinance. Um, Jeff had the opportunity to, to comment if he wanted to. This, this is my personal problem, I hate investment changes. I, I, I see a lot of good with that other new definition, but, um.
That's, well, that's up to you, it's just.
Yeah, I just, I, I would prefer to keep it the way it is. It's the way the planning commission saw us, the way we've been looking at it. It's what Chester County.
Or we send it back to them.
Or we send it back to them.
Where do you go?
Uh, but I, I, I just assume stay.
And that override, yeah. For all the effort they put into that much override.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't feel, and I don't see it as that step, much of a step change, it's just different work, so I'd stay with it, stay with it the way it is.
So the line where it says, so in the revised ordinance that we're voting on, we're gonna, let's say, we're not gonna take Jeff's recommendation, it will say sanitation and stripping for related family, family members, i.e. in-law suites, not to be established as a rental unit for income purposes such as.
No, it says with double O.
The one plus.
Previously in the ordinance, now it's a new definition.
What, what?
So it's just.
So it's underneath, and this is what the P C recommended that the B O S approved. It's additional dwelling unit, A D U, an area within a single-family resident dwelling that contains an additional kitchen, suite, sleeping quarters, and a bathroom or similar area in a separate attached accessory structure. That, that's what we agreed at the, at the P C, and that's what we voted on when we looked at the last.
And you want to stay with it like that?
I, I just, just.
I'd stay with what the P C did, or if you want to change it, then you send it back to them. They put too much effort into this thing to make a last-minute change like this.
And there was a lot of thought into this definition. I mean, we looked at every word, comma, and back and forth. So, um, I, yeah, I just don't think it would be right to change it at this late moment.
If we had, if you wanted to modify it, we wouldn't even resend it back to the planning commission, correct? That we gave you.
And I'm, I'm sick of looking at it, they're still looking at it, so I've just kept the way. Yeah, I don't want to advantage Chester County, Chester, I, I just stayed what we got.
I don't think it's a matter of being sick of it, it's a matter of.
All right, wrong word, right?
What do you, what do you want it to be, how do you want the finished product to look? And, and I'm with you on keeping it as is.
You said it better than I did, David.
You saw the amount of effort the planning commission put into this thing, and the thought process that went into it, but I'm not willing to make a change to it. I, I've read this five times, I think, I don't understand what the difference is between what Jeff wants and what the P C approved, or was suggesting.
I think, I think.
I'm not going to try to iterate it because the discussion was so complex and the planning commission.
I think, I think he should just come to us and see the old definition, and he can, he can build off an old definition. But it's, there's not, it's not different, I know what you're saying, it's not, the meaning's not different.
Yeah, okay.
So do, can I put a proposal, we just do what we have, and I'll pass it as is?
I would accept that.
I would as well.
I wouldn't change it, would not change it.
I would as well. So you say it in the motion, I forget the motion.
Well, the motion is accepted, the appetite.
Okay.
So you don't have any motion to make any changes from the way.
There's nothing in here that says we're going to change the.
But what's it, seconded?
You did.
Yeah, you seconded it.
Okay, going back, making sure we're all on the same page, okay?
So we can, so I guess this is our discussion.
Seconded as is. Want to put a discussion?
Not for me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, David, go ahead.
I make a motion that board appoint Larry Jones to fill the vacant elected auditor position through December thirty-one, twenty nineteen.
I'll second it.
Seconded by John.
All right, here's, here's the story.
This is, this is the Morley.
Here's, here's the story for the public. Um, the township's required by a second-class township code to have three auditors. In reality, the auditors don't audit anything. We hire a professional auditing firm, McCormick Taylor. Three auditors, and they're elected, are in there to back up McCormick Taylor, back up, um, Barbara Kane Thornton is our auditing firm. So they really have a little function, although one of the auditors, Fred Shing, is a real C P A and could actually do an audit if he had to. Jim Johnson, the other, is a financial analyst for Exelon in Baltimore. He also could do an audit. We had another person, Nicole Morley, who's an attorney, also an experienced person, who probably was financially savvy and could do it. But she moved out of the township, so she can no longer be an auditor. So we need to fill that spot by appointment. And then at the next election, that person would have to run for election. Typically, it is not that problem electing auditors, because there's very little function. They only meet once a year to elect the chairman, and that's the end of it. Now Fred likes to review the audit, the official audit, but they have no function in there. They're required by second-class township code. So we have to fill this position. If we do not, then probably some court will fill it for us. Some.
That's correct, yes.
That's correct.
Eventually, it will lead to that, yeah.
It'll lead to some court saying, you shall have an auditor, so. I know this particular individual, Larry Jones. He's an attorney. He's lived in Lannenberg area for a long time. I met him forty years ago when I first moved into the township. He was my, uh, the attorney to cover my settlement, so. He's maintained a West Grove office for all these years. Very pleasant guy, somewhat non-political, pleasant person to talk to, and he's an attorney. So he's got professional credentials, um, and he's willing to do it. It's quite difficult to find people that really want to do this, so. So I was pleased that Larry accepted that if we would appoint him. So that's what I know about Larry now. Nancy, you know, you've met him before.
He seems like a great guy.
He's a decent guy, very decent guy. Lives up in Jessica, or in Little House. Rides a motorcycle, but sold it, I think, he's getting pretty old for motorcycles, so.
And I've talked to him a number of times, too, he's a good guy.
Very pleasant guy. So I'm entirely satisfied with him as an auditor. So I don't know, David, you don't know, you've met him.
But, um, I have heard, okay, I haven't met him, so I have heard. Is there any votes, David?
No, I'm satisfied.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries, aye, no, and he's the chairman.
All right, Larry, you're our next auditor. At some point, he runs us the right of, that's not, maybe even in the spring. Okay.
Did Nicole Morley move out of the county?
She moved to Delaware County, I heard, yeah.
Delaware County.
She sent me a note, resident resigning, and I knew her pretty well, in fact, we supported her as.
Right.
As a district justice in an unsuccessful election many years ago, but she never told me why she moved, so.
Next is the referendum.
Okay, let's see, where are we at in the?
Last, I don't want to.
Dry township, correct.
All right, all right, the next, um, issue is one that the township talked about, has been talked about for years. And recently, we had a, I mean, a last meeting, and we talked about this again. The issue is that Franklin Township is a dry township. And at one point, I didn't, I almost found out that about three or four years ago when some reporter from The Inquirer called me and said, why are you a dry township? And I said, I think we are, but. We do have, and there was an ordinance that was passed in the nineteenth thirties in the prohibition era, it was passed by voter referendum. And it was reaffirmed as a dry township in nineteen sixty-seven by voter referendum. So if we were to propose to remove this ordinance and open it up for restaurants and other establishments, it would have to be done by voter referendum. Many, we've discussed this many times, Eric, I know you and I were on the board, and we always thought that if somebody came up with a real proposal, that we would seriously consider it. We don't have a real proposal, but we've had a number of inquiries for fine dining restaurants and others. And certainly, none of those establishments could start a business like that in front of a dry township, so. The compelling reason to do it is to provide some economic, economic opportunities for the township, and also possibly improve the life in the township with a nicer restaurant, would be very nice. So by consensus vote in the last board meeting, the board voted that we would consider doing this. And certainly, it's a daunting task. And we agreed in the last meeting that we would think about it and think about what it would take to do this, and it is still a very daunting task. Uh, why is it? Because to remove it by referendum requires an extraordinary effort. It's just like putting a candidate on the ballot for election to an elected office. You need to collect signatures on a petition and submit that petition to voter services with the right amount of signatures and qualified signatures. And then they will put it on the ballot, and then voters can actually vote up and down on it. But what's daunting about the petition is that this particular referendum requires a number of signatures equal to twenty-five percent of the number of voters that participated in the last election. So that was over two thousand voters, so we need to have about five hundred and twenty-five fifty signatures. That is an enormous task, to collect that many signatures. And we would have a very short period of time to do it, essentially a four-week period.
Three weeks.
February thirteenth to March thirteenth, somewhere near, so maybe it's, yeah, I guess February is a short month.
It's a, it's always a three-week period.
So it's, it's a short, it's a short period. So the, the path forward in the last meeting, as we've all talked about, is what can we, how can we actually do this if we wanted to do it? And this one other thing people should understand is that this is not a, um, an official township function. Township cannot do this by itself. This is an individual effort by five supervisors that believe that it's in best interest of the township to do that. So supervisors would be doing this as an individual effort. The township would provide some logistical support, some legal support and for drafting petitions, and also possibly some copying and things like that. Let's see. One thing that I realized we needed was some talking points to talk to residents. We need to have a compelling case to actually do this. So I just generated a draft, I'll call it a summary proposal for the board to look at, that could be the talking points. It's just a draft, it's just, again, we need to further develop it. I'll, I'll just read it so you have an idea what we're talking about. It says, dear residents, you may be aware, or not aware, that the township, Franklin is a dry township, meaning that alcoholic beverages cannot be served. Wineries and breweries classified as accessories to agriculture and therefore can serve alcoholic beverages because they grow the production ingredients on their property. So they get a pass from the liquor control board. Original ordinance was that limited alcoholic beverages were created by referendum in the nineteen thirties during prohibition period. In nineteen sixty-seven, it was later reaffirmed by voter referendum. By contemporary standards, many people believe, maybe it's antiquated, maybe that's not the right term, we need to develop that, a better synonym than that. Uh, the legislation limits the development of businesses that serve alcoholic beverages, typically restaurants and retail outlets. Over the years, the township has received inquiries about the ability to build a restaurant. The dry township ordinance has always blocked these proposals. Board supervisors, past and present, have discussed the issue and determined this ordinance should be removed to promote the development of a restaurant. Recently, the board supervisors unanimously agreed by consensus vote to explore the logistics of removing the dry township ordinance. The removal of the ordinance is rightfully a difficult one and requires approval by a majority of residents. The ordinance was created by voter referendum in the thirties, therefore its removal must be accomplished by voter referendum. So to place the question on the May two thousand and nineteen ballot requires a petition to submit to voter services by March twelfth, and a petition requires five hundred and twenty-five signatures, as I said, so. And then, I, I just said that before. It's important to understand that it's not an official action by the township, it's a joint effort by the supervisors. So these are kind of a summary of what we do. We'll be possibly some talking points we would use to talk to residents. Knocking on doors and collecting signatures, I think many people would be agreeable, but it wouldn't be a short conversation, people want to know what you're doing, so. You'd have to start out with some defined discussion point. That may answer many of their questions, but then you can end the conversation, so.
The one thing I'd add, John, is that I want to assure the residents that we're not, this is not opening the floodgates. I mean, there's very few liquor licenses, if we get one, we would be lucky. So there is, and, and there's some words about that Chester County, we allow so much, so many people, a minority above that, so if, I just want that one session acknowledged, and probably we'd want.
Yeah, the liquor control board controls this. Uh, based on our population, we would only allow, we would only be allowed one liquor license. It doesn't open the floodgates for.
Yeah, so then we're.
The, could it be a B Y B if the.
We do have B Y B.
So if a restaurant wants to open up, then they, they can do a B Y, they could do a B Y B.
The rules by the, by the liquor control board say that for Chester County's population, you're only allowed to have one hundred and sixty-six licenses. In reality, Chester County has three hundred and twenty-five, so. Something, formula doesn't always work. You need three thousand people for every license. Franklin Township has about forty-three hundred voters, so you would only be able to have one. So I think that answers.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Probably, I'm, I'm asking, I just roughed this.
No, I think that was good, that was the only thing I would add to it.
So, yeah, everybody needs to get their hands on this thing and see if we can approve this document. Then I come up with a list of elements for the referendum success, and I'll just go down the list. We need to develop a summary proposal document I just talked about to be used for talking points when engaging residents. It would be similar to an executive summary that precedes the presentation of a complex issue, and I have a draft that's. Number two, we would, we post the information on the website. The summary proposal should precede all reference material. We should post all information available. We have an enormous amount of written material that somebody could dig into. We have an enormous amount of written material that somebody could dig into. This will provide additional details for the residents that want a deeper understanding of the facts. We may consider a letter mailed by post to township residents. Certainly a major cost to that. It's important that we reach all households to provide advanced information to facilitate petition work. I think out of all the things we do, that'd probably be the thing that would provide the most information to the residents. But it's a cost, so we need to have to discuss that. Township office events, we could facilitate petition signing here, refreshments, other possibilities. We could get music, maybe a celebrity dance or something.
Lots of wine.
Newspaper coverage. Objective, Chester County Press published the information in an article summary arising our last November board meeting, and that was pretty comprehensive. Somebody get a copy of that out. We should review this article to determine anything that's incomplete, incorrect, or needs further enhancement. So I'll get the board a copy of that newspaper article. And then the, deciding your door-to-door campaign to collect petition signatures. This is not a minor task. We've done lots of this, and doing this in February and early March, you're going to snowstorm or something like that, I don't know. I'm not ready to give up on it, but it's a daunting task, so...
As residents, do you guys think it's worth it?
Yes. Eric and I talked about this many, many times, so...
Anybody else?
Because we're going to need to know with door-to-door whether, like, you know... Yeah, yeah. See, it's good to me. I don't see a downside, but it's good to know.
We're no longer functionally dry, legally dry, but we have three wineries.
That shows that people are up to it.
And the wineries are, I think are reasonably popular.
The sign-up sheet should go with the wine.
Well, it won't be... It's a lot of party at the wine room.
The problem is, you get a lot of people from outside the township.
Well, that's, you need 500 in township.
Right, we would bet.
You would bet that, for all that. You're going to tell them how they draw it, right? Do they draw fast and slow?
Are you a neighbor or a non-nabour?
I mean, we all have a network here of people we know, so we would certainly work on that. That's what we've got right now. Last meeting, we said we better do something, so that's what I come up with. So let's continue the dialogue here.
Is there any thought to simply waiting another year, figuring that the next election will have fewer voters?
I hate to tell you the supervisors, but you tend not to attract as many voters as senators.
Mark, didn't you say something? They've waited four years.
We've had some inquiries.
So that's if you get it on the ballot for the next one.
You're saying, "Don't do anything."
No, I'm saying, "If you don't do anything now..."
Don't actually do anything.
Well, actually, you can run a petition and not submit it, correct? And you're good to go for the following year?
If we don't get enough signatures.
Yeah, if you wanted to.
If the signature's done, you can do it again.
If you submit a petition and the ballot question appears on the ballot and you lose...
Right. But if you, if you fall short of the number of signatures in your petition drive, you can do one more year. Oh, yeah, that, it becomes...
Yeah, start from zero.
I understand that. So, yeah, I'm not proposing we not do it. No, I was, I was just here for the... Trying to think about the logistics.
Guys, it's, I'm sure you all are aware that if all of us dedicate one solid day and not, and take the neighborhoods, we can get 100 signatures each.
That's a, that's a task, I'm going to tell you. I like him, he's very optimistic. That's a dose to deliver 100 pieces of literature and drop it off.
100 signatures in one day, that's...
Long-term optimism.
If you took it over a weekend.
We will take it over a weekend.
It's a three-week period. It is a very bad time of the year because there are snowstorms, night storms. It's difficult for us to get around, but at the same time, it keeps the residents...
At least they're home.
They tend to not want to go out gallivanting around when it's...
There's another politician in the pool if we carry a snow shovel and one way we go. I've shown a lot of snow.
My last neighborhood, I had a really huge snowboard.
You can make a signature real quick.
I want to hear about the inquiries, though, you had.
Look, there are people that, when people, when businesses propose these things, they don't want to advertise it. So nothing would kill a deal faster than advertising a proposal.
I mean, Chute Creek is an obvious place for...
I'm not going to, I can't say one way or the other. I'm not going to get caught up in that discussion. What about a Facebook page for this? At least getting the information out.
You can advertise it.
Let's just get the, start getting the advertising. What about businesses that, like retail businesses, that get hundreds of people walking through? You know, somebody, a business owner that has, would be in favor of this, having a petition...
Well, they have to be a resident.
Exactly. So you do a signature with an address to verify.
Yeah.
You need to make this address.
This has to be a resident.
You have to be a resident to collect signatures. And you, and only one person can work one sheet of paper.
Right.
See, then you have to sign it after they've seen, you saw all the signatures.
What Stefan's proposing is to get the information out there. To collect signatures, it has to be hand-delivered. You can't just get somebody in an email or on Facebook. You have to hand, hold a petition in front of them and say, "This is the..." And you have to tell them, they're not going to read the whole thing at the top. You say, "This is a petition to put on the ballot a question about whether to keep Franklin Township dry or to allow a possible liquor license so that alcoholic beverages can be served." If you say it like that, and you can probably iron out the words, but the point is, it has to be done in front of the person, the person has to sign.
The petitioner has to...
And you can usually get, you know, one house, you can usually get two or possibly three adult registered voters.
You don't have to be, you don't have to be 18. You don't have to be 21.
You have to be a registered voter.
Be a registered voter. It's 18.
18.
Do you have to be 18?
Yep.
You have to be a registered voter and elector of the township in order to collect the signatures and sign it, so...
Yeah, because each petition page has a petitioner on the back, the person proposing the petition. They need to certify to a notary that they collected all those signatures. So it's a very controlled process. You need to be straight up, and when a petition is submitted to voter services, they check every signature to make sure that it's a registered voter. So you need to get extras to cover things that...
Right, there'll be one or two that are not really residents or non-registered voters.
Anyway, I think, we need to think hard about this letter because I think this one letter is the one thing that would get it out to everybody directly in a timely manner. So I think that's what we need to think out pretty quickly, whether we want to do that, so...
Well, it's going to cost a couple thousand bucks, probably, right?
1,500 bucks, I think, isn't it, the mail letter?
It's, well, we used to do the newsletters, it was between like 650 to 700 for postage, that's accounting the time involved.
Yeah, but for the, for assembling the letter in the boxes, we, that'd be Steph Effron.
More work for you.
Well, that's, that's my counting.
I'm not discounting your labor.
Well, I have volunteers, you know, I'd be happy to come and...
That's a... It would be a very simple letter. So we had the township funds send out a letter. I thought the township, I thought the township had to be separate from this idea, which includes not only funds, but labor during, during business hours. I can't imagine it would be... The reason a township can't be involved, none of the township employees live in a township and can, can validate a signature on a petition, so...
Okay, so there's some legal is stopping us from doing, from working.
Let us know, that's a problem.
The legislature can handle it, we'll take care of it.
Let's ask Mark.
Yeah, what, what is the proposal?
Where would the money come from, like, for mailing?
Could it come from our budget?
Volunteers.
I don't see any legal reason why we couldn't use, I guess, your machine, your foot, if you have a postage machine.
Now, we have used the bystanders.
The township has, has put referendums on the ballot in the past. Wouldn't the township...
But that was township business, like for taxes or whatnot, that was township business.
Right, so that was, I think, for open space.
It was open space.
And that was passing an ordinance to do that, and so you didn't need to collect signatures.
I would, I'd be honest, that would be a little bit of advantage in township money, even if it was small, for mailing, for something that may benefit, that is not township business and may benefit a business, a future business.
It is a little tricky.
You raise donations.
All right, so...
All right, well, we don't, right, we'll just have to go there and think about that.
The issue is, not that the staff can actually do anything physical to collect any of the signatures.
Right, we don't have, right, that's just fact.
So I don't know what else, you know, an individual within the township could do to support a petition, I mean, someone who works here.
If somebody came in the door and said, "I've heard there's petitions circulating around," someone from the office could say, "Well, why don't you call so-and-so?"
That's fine.
That's about it.
Okay, well, we have a little more work to do on it, but...
All right, so we've got a couple of things to iron here. So maybe in the next meeting, even the business meeting, or the January organization meeting, we talk about it at the end of the meeting. Is it smart to... Don't you follow along to it? You're my best editor.
Yeah, obviously, we're working on it.
But nobody writes better than you do, so... Is it, is it smart to have this all fall on five people as opposed to trying to get leaders within neighborhoods and ask who knows? Well, certainly, we have a network, and we have individuals who can help us. I'm not going to try to do this myself.
Yeah, I think we've got, all the things are open to try to figure out, John.
We all know people in various neighborhoods.
There's 40 homes in my neighborhood. I guarantee you, there's two or three individuals who are going to take this and say, "Hey, let me help you."
All right, let's, let's start in the interim here, let's start identifying neighborhood captains that can do this for us. Okay?
I want them on my team.
Sometimes there's interesting discussions here, and sometimes it isn't. But tonight, we had some stuff. Now, we have...
That discussion is finished, we're down to public comments.
We have, we have some here with some public comments. We're down to the public comment section. So you folks here, I know, want to talk to the township about some building project in the township? So identify yourselves and present the case. You're not going to bite your head off, so...
That's okay. It's Dawn Dowling, 121 East Dale Road, and I'm sorry to make the meeting go any longer, but I don't...
This is not too bad, 9 o'clock's not bad.
I apologize that I have not been involved in Township Matters. We've been here almost 14 years now, and we live, like I said, we're on East Dale Road, and I'm sure you know what this is about, because if I live on East Dale Road, I live right next door to Mrs. Boyle's property, the 117. And to everybody in the world, that looks like a scrappy piece of no, no good property. And I don't know how well you know what happened to it since your, since your meeting. And the property has sold. Now, where we come in is when we bought our house from Larry Dale, we were told that property would never be built on. And Larry Dale told us, he found a bottom turtle there, and he said, "It's a wetland, nobody will build there." Okay? So we are very environmentally inclined. My father was the, one of the directors of the nature conservancy. I worked at the Brainy Mind Conservancy for 26 years. So we wanted that piece of property to remain, you know, natural. So we knew, we knew that it had been, you know, with Mrs. Boyle for years and years and nothing ever happened to it. Well, then, I didn't know about the August 15th meeting, and I wish I had been here for that. So what happened was, then the property went up for sale. So we immediately called the Violet Campbell guy and said, "What's the deal? We know you can't build on that property." And he was really pretty rude and said, "Well, we're just selling it as is." So he said, "They have to go to the township themselves, whoever's going to buy it." So we, of course, ran up to the township and immediately talked to Jeff and said, "What do we do now?" And we understand that the property has sold, but my understanding, I've worked with GIS mapping, I've worked with wetland delineations, and I talked to the health department, and Jeff said he had talked to Mr. Cummins, who's Mr. Appenathy's boss, and I did talk to him, and I talked to the conservation district people. They told me to come back to you and put it back on the plate, so you were aware of what was going on. But that whole area, I walk it, and nobody really, I don't think, has been in there. That's a wetland. And I don't know whether it's, and then I talked to Jeffrey Vogel, your other, your engineer.
These are building township...
Exactly, so I followed him, and I told him who I was and everything. And he said, "Well, I thought that was it." He said, "Don't quote him," but he thought that was within the wetland delineation line.
I, I don't know that specifically, but let me tell you what the procedure is. In order to bill a residence on a property, the first thing that a person has to do is establish that they can put a functioning septic system and domestic well on the property. The township does not regulate that. This Chester County Health Department authorizes all that stuff based on inspections. So that's the first thing the property owner has to do. That's what we advise the Boyle family when they're in here, that they would, I suggested that they get an engineer to help them and see if they can develop those systems. If they can, then the township can begin to look at it for other issues, as you suggested.
Okay, well, PR, environmental already came out. They tried to do the perk, and I spoke with Mr. Rizone, who was doing the perking process, and he said, "Oh, it doesn't look good at all." I don't know what the final, you know, report said to the owner, but he told me it was a shame that they didn't know before they bought it. And I said, "Well, yes, they did." I knew they had come here, and I knew they had been given the minutes from the meeting.
Well, let me just say that there are a variety of onsite disposal systems, septic systems, that can be applied to a property. And it's not just the standard one where you have a prairie, a tank, and a leaching field.
Can you speak up a little higher?
I'm sorry.
I'm hard here. Difficult to read.
There are a number of different septic systems that can be put on a property like that. There's a sand mound system, there are pressurized systems, and then there are even, there are even stream discharge systems that can be approved by the Chester County Health Department. That's their business. We don't get involved in that. If, if somebody comes to us with a certificate that says that the Chester County Health Department approves a septic system and a well on a property, then we're obliged to consider a building permit on it. They haven't brought that to us yet. But I can't, but I can't deny them a permit unless there are other factors, as you suggest, wetlands. I don't know that. I don't know the property from that perspective. I would expect that this person who bought it must have looked at that. I don't think they bought it. But if they, if they find, if they find that the place is billable, when we consider all our land development subdivision issues, and it's in compliance, we have no option other than to issue a building permit.
Well, there's three streams that go into the stream that is behind our house. With the rain that we've had recently, it took our bridge from the one side of our property that went across to, we call it the back 40, the other acre, and moved it from that side of our house all the way down to the other. That was just from the water, and I know all about water. So what's going to happen if they do build there, and there's three streams that come in there, what's going to happen with that flow?
I, I don't know. They have, they have to, they have to submit a plan.
Okay, and I'm, not to be sarcastic, but are they going to put a treehouse, outhouse up there?
They need, they need to come to township with a certificate saying that the Chester County Health Department approves their on-site disposal well, and then we would begin to look at other requirements for a building permit. But if it meets all the, all our requirements, we would have no option other than to issue a building permit.
What I'm concerned about was, was that a designated wetlands way before this guy bought it? Was this a designated wetlands area? Because that property is so...
I don't, I don't know that specifically.
I mean, it's a piece of gold.
I know that, John, we don't know that now.
It's a piece of what?
Are you guys a member of the Brainy Mind Conservancy? You do the subscribers with John Lott?
The red lines determination is a very official, does a map.
It is, right, and GIS mapping.
Specifically where it is.
Right, and you guys should have a GIS map. And John... And John Bylacker and the people from the conservancy would be able to tell you whether that's a designated wetland.
Our zoning officer can find out easily. I mean, he just has.
That's a great question.
And if it's a wetlands.
And can I find, can I.
Well, there are, there are a number of reasons that you couldn't. One is wetlands, steep slopes, other issues, driveway access.
That area is gold as far as environmental. It's got vernal pools, and I know it because I walk it, but it's, that corner.
We have Blue Ring that goes there, we have.
That's a clear water creek.
Clearwater Creek, we have.
Water Crest.
Water Crest that we, she made salad out of. It's, it's clear. We have crayfish in it, we have little minnows in it, my grand, our grandson walks, go in there and move.
I understand all that.
But the point, the point is, that's a very sensitive environmental area. And I, I just want to make sure that before it's disturbed, it's a very, and it goes right down into the Peace Dale Preserve. Okay? And Mr. Scholfer, who's the manager of the preserve, that goes right down into the Elk Creek. And they're doing all kinds of preservation work for the Elk Creek. And that whole flow of that creek goes right down through the preserve. So whether, if this guy didn't understand when he bought it, and we would have bought it, but we know it had $20,000 of back taxes on it, and I know this guy paid $25,000 to pay the back taxes, but the guy said, it's a shame this guy didn't know it before he bought it.
But he did.
But he did know about it.
It's the entire, I don't know, I haven't walked it, like you, you have 2.2 acres. I just looked online, it looks like it's sold, number eight for $20,000. Is the entire thing?
90% of it is completely wet.
So I was just wondering if they, if they can find a little building envelope that allows them to build there.
We have a sand mound, I don't know where they would put a sand mound.
And we're up.
Even if they put it up high, because it goes down.
Well, like I said, if, if the determination on the septic's gonna be by the, the Chester County Health Department, and then the township, if they decide to submit a building permit, then the township will review that plan in conjunction with our ordinances and the zoning that applies to that property.
Well, that's why I came back, because the, the conservation district said to come back to you guys, tell you guys that I'm very concerned about it, and that I'm willing to, you know, do what it takes to have that not built on, because.
I, I can't guarantee that.
No, I understand. No, I understand.
Legally, I can't deny them if they need all the requirements.
Right, but my question is.
Mark, I don't think anyone else could say about this.
My question is, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't matter if that man bought the property, if it was already determined that it was an official wetland.
Well, look, if it's an official wetland defined by the appropriate maps, then he's not gonna be able to.
Well, that's what I want to try to find out, and that's what I want to know. And I wanted to know if you guys were part of the Brine Line Conservancy, because they're the ones that do the GIS mapping, and they should be able to tell us or tell you whether it is or.
John, can you find that out?
John, would you?
We have GIS mapping, right? So it's gonna be, you put that on.
On Chester. Yes, it's gonna tell you the wetlands, yes.
Wait, what if it's, it's gotta be a flood plain, too, a flood zone.
It is a flood zone, there's no question.
Again, they're all things that we, as John said, we need to look at, I mean, before, before building permits. They have to dig a well. If they can't dig a well, they can't go out.
Right.
The flood maps, I remember. Remise.
I, I would advise against speculating, but I mean, if, if there are issues with respect to flood plains and, you know, raising the floodway, then those are federally regulated boundaries, and you shouldn't be able to build in them.
Well, that's why I just wanted to come back and put it back on the table, so that you guys knew that we're very concerned about it.
There's nothing that prevents the new owner from doing testing.
Right, right.
But right now, we don't have a protocol.
But I just wanted to be proactive and let you know, when the proposal comes in, because Jeffrey Vogel said I could leave my name as Sharon, and she could call me if the, if the proposal did come and the application came in.
Yeah, whether it's an application for permit or variance or what have you, we can do that.
And in the meantime, we can check to see whether it's designated.
Sure.
And then get back to you.
Right.
Can we check with the Chester County Board of Health, too, to see if there's a application for a septic system? Well, I, I can guarantee them. If he's started testing it, they've got an application in, because you have to engage the health department to do the test.
And is it public information to see if, if it's approved by Chester County Board of Health?
I don't, it would be public if they approved it, but I don't think, I don't think they're gonna tell you.